Meeting call to order. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn is absent. Mayor Moore?
Yeah.
Please stand now for our silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with all my nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, The Coaster, and The Star-Ledger on January 7th, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, the mayor and council would like to make a presentation regarding the Asbury Park Fishing Club and Joe Palata.
Yes, as everybody's well aware, Joe Palata, former city employee, head lifeguard, former DPW president of Asbury Park Fishing Club for as long as I've known him because nobody will take the job from him, and nobody can take the job from him. Every year, this past year was the 29th Annual Asbury Park Fishing Club, and it's no longer part of Flea Market because it's some of the best vendors as far as specialty plugs and specialty items and fishing in the northeast. So it's the biggest one, the biggest show that's going. Last year, they didn't have the show because of COVID, but they were still able to make nice donations to all the local charities and plus other charities throughout the county. This year, they were up against it because Massa and Marquette decided to close Convention Hall, so they didn't think they had a home. Donna and I rained a storm one day, like, could they go to the school? Could they go there? Donna said, why don't we try the Berkeley Carteret? So this past Sunday, the Berkeley Carteret, they had their show, and Joe, who he believes in, John, come pick up the checks and give them out as soon as possible before... They won't bounce, or anything, but Joe just likes to get it done. And everybody, Joe and his beautiful wife Casey, will be watching this on TV. So all the associations are getting checks. I know Little League's here, somebody from the Boys Club here, if you're Boys Club, you might as well come on up. Alicia was supposed to be here for...
I'm the driver.
If not, she's upstairs. And then, do we have anybody from the Big Brothers, Big Sisters? Okay, well, Alina, I'll let you read the letter from Joey Palata.
Yeah, so I believe this is the oldest fishing club in the United States, too.
Correct, 1902, oldest saltwater fishing club, saltwater, 1902, Asbury Park.
Okay, so here's a letter from Joe Palata. Dear Mayor Moore, with the enclosure, with the closure of Convention Hall, the members of the Asbury Park Fishing Club were concerned that a 29-year tradition of fundraising through our annual fishing shows had come to an end. We are grateful to Mayor Moore and City Mayor Donna Viero, who suggested alternate venues so we could keep our show in the city. Albie Manzo from the Berkeley Oceanfront Hotel came to our rescue and saved this longstanding tradition. In addition to fundraising, these APFC fishing shows serve to introduce visitors to all that our beachfront and boardwalk offer. This year, attendees were additionally impressed by the elegance of the historic Berkeley Oceanfront Hotel. Mr. Manzo and the staff at the Berkeley have our deepest appreciation for accommodating us. In addition to donations made to other local area nonprofits, it is with great pride that present to the city council the following contributions. Do you want me to read the amount as well?
Yep.
$2,000 to the Asbury Park Little League. $500 to Asbury Park Boys and Girls Club. $500 to the Asbury Park Recreation Committee. $500 to Fulfill. $300 to Asbury Park Boardwalk Rescue. That's it, right? That's it?
Uh, Big Brothers, City of Asbury Park, yep, we'll take care of these. And as the letter said, besides, these were the Asbury Park charities that the Fishing Club give to. Besides this, they give to Clean Ocean Action, they give to the Tortoise Society, they give to all the cleanups and to other functions. They fund the carp fishing contest to get the carp out of D.L.A. because they shouldn't be in D.L.A., so they do a lot of other things during the year. They have their own fishing tournament, they sponsor other fishing tournaments. So again, Joey can't be here, Casey can't be here, so all the recipients, again, he's watching your own TV, so if he'd like to say something, thank you, you got to have a...
Yes. First of all, good evening, everyone, and thank, on behalf of the Asbury Park Little League, I am totally humbled, grateful, gratified for this donation. It really helped our kids, our T-ball kids, I coached the T-ball kids in the majors, and thank the parents for all they do and the township. Matter of fact, we just, we have like 80 to 90 kids this year, and we just ordered 15 sets of uniforms for each team. We got all the equipment, the parents don't pay registration, so we really appreciate all the donation that we get. Also, we're having our first Little League parade, April 2nd. I just want to do this for the kids on behalf of the entire program. It's not about me, it's about all of us, and for the town, and what we do, and what you guys do for us, and what we want to do for the town. And we just want to say, we really appreciate everything that you do for us, Mayor, and the council, and everybody here.
On this one, thank the Fishing Club.
And thank the Fishing Club.
While you're here, and it goes up to TV World, give the location where we're meeting and the time on Saturday the 2nd.
Yes, we're meeting at Veterans Parks, over on Fifth Avenue, at 10:45 a.m. That's what time the parade starts. We'll go down Fifth Avenue to Memorial Drive, and we go over to the school. We have a lot of refreshments, we have the VFW that's going to go up into the parade with us, we have the charter schools marching with us, as well as the Asbury Park, part of the Bay is marching with us as well. We have two kids that went and is going to Hershey, Pennsylvania Elite School. Also, we have another young man that plays ball with us, he's flying, as of right now, he's awesome. And this is what we are trying to do, is much more than baseball, we want to teach our kids to see what tomorrow's going to bring for us. And I just want to thank everyone again, thank the Fishing Club.
How old are you, are you from the Boys and Girls Club?
Hello, everybody, I'm from the Boys and Girls Club of Mama County, I'm the site coordinator there. My name is Destiny. On behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, I'd like to say thank you to the Fishing Club, just because this, this will be useful for our youth development program, and whether it be our workforce development program, and our STEM program, it'll, it'll be in the right hands, similar to what this gentleman had to say. You know, just providing our kids with different opportunities that sometimes they don't see outside of the club, so thank you to the Fishing Club.
Debbie, who may be in the old brothers' room, because Joe is older than me, so...
Yeah, probably over 50 years. Thank you so much, Joe, and Casey, and everybody from the Fishing Club. I am in awe of Joe's perseverance because he has so many health problems, but still his determination and his drive makes him go there every year to the Fishing Club. He doesn't let any of the guys down, and he runs it like a champ, and I just want to thank him and the Fishing Club. And I'd also like to thank the Manzo Brothers, because they are such a pleasure to have here. They've really taken this over the top. I'm glad that they were able to help Joe and find him the venue, and I'm really happy, and whatever we can do with the Manzo Brothers, we're happy to help, too.
Thank you. Recreation is accepted for both the Fulfill and the City Recreation, so Alicia?
Yes, my name's Alicia Floyd, I'm the Recreation Director for the city. And for those of you who don't know, we do a summer camp program, six weeks, and every penny we get helps and ensures that kids in Asbury Park, whether they can afford to pay or not, get to come to summer camp. So every penny we get really assists with that. So I thank the Fishing Club and to piggyback what Debbie said, the Berkeley and the Manzo Brothers for giving the Fishing Club a home, because without that, we wouldn't have this. So also, too, I want to mention, plug Rock and Roll for Recreation, April 28th, another fundraiser for the children for summer day camp, Stone Pony. Details are on our website.
Tickets on sale.
Yes, tickets on sale.
Again, Joe, Casey, all members of the Fishing Club, Dave, everybody, on behalf of the city and on behalf of all the groups that you were so proud to give the money, thank you, wishing you could be here with us, we know you'll watch it on TV. Thank you.
Can we get everyone together for a photo?
Can we give Alicia a try?
All right. Waiter.
Right over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's better.
Yeah.
She gave me penicillin the Thursday, I was never allergic in my life, and I broke out on high mom.
Yeah, he said, I thought you weren't allergic to penicillin. She's 168 years old, I...
You give me penicillin every month, though. Get over the cafe.
Thank you. I love your little... Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Deb.
Okay, we're now on to special events.
First application before you is from the Ocean Township Intermediate School. They would like to do a beach cleanup on our beach on April 2nd. The Solis Sunrise Walk on the boardwalk on June 26th, the Summer Concert Band Series, which would begin in July and run through the end of August on Thursday evenings in Bradley Park. Walk MS on May 1st, and Bike MS on May 7th. And lastly, the Asbury Park Restaurant Tour, which would be held, registration for that would be in Kennedy Park. Are there any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation of proposed development of Block 3103, Lot 1, 40 Lake Avenue by Toll Brothers LLC.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If I may, Andrew Harris with the Trail of Fox Rothschild, on behalf of Toll Asbury Park LLC. What I want to do is just briefly do an introduction as to the project that we are proposing at 407 Lake Avenue, which is Lot 3103, Lot 1, and then I'll have you give from Toll, go through the plans, and I describe in more specificity what it is that is being proposed. The lot in question, as I'm sure a lot of you know, is watering on the downtown, but within the waterfront redevelopment zone in the prime removal area. Borders on Cookman Avenue and Lake Avenue, and then Grand and Heck. The entire site is being proposed in terms of development for this project. One thing that I ask you to be aware of is there are significant limitations with regard to development on the site because of the fact that it's right across Wesley Lake. And that limits in terms of how the site can be developed, and we'll go into that a little bit more. What is being proposed are 62 forestale townhomes. They're going to be a few different buildings, both three-story and four-story. In total, we're going to have 26 units in the three-story and 36 units in the four-story. There won't be sufficient parking on site to meet the requirements under the redevelopment plan, also the RSIS. With that being said, I'd first like to have our engineer go through the plans, Jay Cruz, and do the brief description of what we're talking about with site, what is being proposed for this project.
Good evening, everybody, and it's Andy J. Cruz with EC Consultants, we're design engineer for Toll Brothers for this development. If anybody can share me, please say, speak up, or slow down, I have a tendency to talk fast as I get into my field here. So Andy mentioned the existing property constraints and gave you a surrounding overview of the property itself, which you're very familiar with as being around the community. So as you mentioned earlier, it is an existing vacant site right now, it's 2.44 acres in size. On the site itself, as you're familiar with it, is half the site is an existing piece of the parking area with access points on Grand Avenue, which if you're looking at the screen, Grand Avenue is to your left, Heck Street's to your right, Cookman's to the top, and Lake is to the bottom. So north is the top of the screen. So there's two entrances to that existing public parking area, one onto Grand Avenue, one onto Lake Avenue. The remaining half, which is exposed to Heck Street, is existing open lawn area with some landscaping leading around the perimeter chain with some posts that go around the outside perimeter property as well. So he also mentioned some difficulties with the development to align with the environmental constraints that are on the property. And you're familiar with Wesley Lake, associated with Wesley Lake is a flood hazard area, a hundred-year flood hazard area, I'm sure you're familiar with the speed numbers of the town, city. And in this case, the hundred-year flood hazard area blankets the majority of the site. If you look at the exhibit, the dark black line runs across the site, extending out from Lake Avenue, runs through the portion of the site, that is the limited hundred-year flood hazard area. You can see it blankets most of the property, and what that does to the proposed development is you have to elevate the buildings above that level, which is elevation 10. We have to be at elevation 11, floors or above. And in this case, it's even a little more different, I'm not sure if you're familiar with, the title versus a fluvial flood hazard area. This case, the DEP, we've had multiple conversations with the DEP, and they've determined that this flood hazard area associated with the lake is fluvial. So we have that full implication, which means we're limited to what we can do on the site and places to fill within the portion. It's tough to elevate the buildings, we can't fill the site. So we have crawl spaces, we have that on our parking and our drive-ways elevated above or at the hundred-year flood hazard areas, flood hazard area elevation, and we also have to then have, as I'm getting into the site development, an access that is at or above that elevation to an existing roadway or bus property. So what I'll do is go into the next slide, which is a layout of the proposed development, site layout, for what we're proposing on the property itself. As you can see, and as we mentioned, we have a total of 62 units broken out into five buildings. The buildings that are located along Cookman Avenue, there are three sets of what we call six-packs, which have six units in them, six condo units. Each of those condo units has two actual dwellings in it, six packed flats. Those buildings are four-story as a front along Cookman Avenue, and also along Cookman Avenue, as I mentioned earlier, as a response to the flood hazard area regulations. Since this is a multifamily development, we have to have one access point, the at or above the elevation of the flood hazard area. And in this case, the highest elevation is near the intersection of Cookman and Grand. Everything in Cookman is higher, it slopes downward towards Lake. So we, in the conversation with DEP, that is the most appropriate location for emergency access. We didn't want to put an actual physical access into that area, so to have not to use a very heavily traveled roadway into and out of the city. With that, you see past the three buildings out of front along Cookman are four-story, again, that's 36 units, as we mentioned earlier. You go south for the front of Lake Avenue. We have another 26 units broken out in two buildings, one building has seven condo units, the other building has six condo units. And then as you get closer to the right of the screen toward intersection of Heck Street and Lake Avenue, you have an open lawn congregation area, you have a raised boardwalk slash deck sitting area to provide access to those units along Lake Avenue. Again, interesting enough, with the implication of the multifamily development in a flood hazard area, we also have to provide ADA access to the three-story units on Lake Avenue because they have havel spaces around the floor. In this case, then, we have to have what we call that boardwalk that runs along the frontage of those units on Lake Avenue, which blends in with the shore realty and the area of the surrounding properties. So adding to the area, again, because we cannot fill on the site, we have, everything has to be elevated on open flow or removed at the bottom, even after you've got the flood hazard area regulations.
Now, I note that there are two access points on Lake Avenue onto that so-called boardwalk line, right? There's, where it's discussed before the TRC about adding an additional access. Something that the world can consider, right?
Yes, absolutely, we've heard that a couple of times from TR, the TRC, and are willing to include that in the development layout.
Continue.
So past the circulation, as you can see, there's the vehicle circulation that I'm sure is important to you to understand. The vehicle circulation is provided by a main drive aisle between the rear of the buildings. As you can see, it's 24 feet wide to comply with the RSIS standards, the residential safety standards for vehicle circulation. Each unit will have a deep driveway, deep driveway, before you hit the garage, you're going to need to clear the garage, block, deep, but the garage area also has an area for the basic thing. Between each driveway area, there's also a lay-down area for the storage of weight days, four days when race would be picked up by your car. As Andy mentioned, between the driveway park and garage park, this applies with the city's redevelopment requirements for parking and also the residential safety standards. The access, obviously, the driveway, as you can see from the exhibit, is off of Heck Street and Grand Avenue, and again, that's providing right now two-way access to the streets. With the access points and the location, we're proposing to remove the two driveway access points from the existing parking area, we'll have two new access points. But with the restriping along all the road frontages, by removing the two accesses from the existing public and putting new ones, there will be a net zero loss of the public parking around the property.
Now, with regard to the access point on Heck Street, I just wanted to address that for a minute. There was a concern within the reports that you received about headlights going into residential properties. Where that driveway goes faces, can you go through that a little bit, and whether or not there would be an issue with that?
The driveway actually is just south of the existing driveway that goes into the under the, first with parking garage for the development, the Wesley River development, across the street on Heck. And the headlights coming out are basically directly across from a wall with a bullford lizard that goes into the parking garage. So they are, the driveway isn't directly across from where the existing residential units start, which is closer to the south. So there's no impact on the existing residential property headlights that would be excellent heck, excellent on heck.
And I note that on Heck, you have a crosshanded area before we get to the area that's on site, what is that for?
So as part of the water property development plan, there is an extensive street scape requirement for all of the surrounding roadways. What you're seeing there is on Heck, the street scape being enhanced in accordance with the redevelopment plan, similarly mirrors what is across the street on Heck, which is what is with the document. So what you see with the hash areas is decorative pavement to define the driveway into the site versus the street scape improvements of the scored sidewalk, the bricks, those type of amenities that are being included as part of the development. That street scape also, again, then extends around all sides of the property to comply with redevelopment requirements along Cookman, along Grand, and also along Lake Avenue. With that area, with the street scape taken care of, the other items that are inclusive for the development, and you can see internal walkways leading from the boardwalk along the front of Lake Avenue, from the interior to the interior, there'll also be a central mail collecting unit near the entrance onto Heck Street, providing for the postal standards. And then the last items that are required for the project are obviously utilities. So in this case, there's public water and sewer that front along the project. We'll be tying into two existing several locations that were anticipated for development of this property back in the early 2000s. We can reutilize those connections to the existing infrastructure. We've talked to the Jersey State Water Company about accessing the existing water mains onto the Cookman and Lake. And the last is store management, and we provided a store management design that meets the supplies with city regulations and also the PTP standards for store management.
Now, I noticed that there are certain comments within the report that are just street lighting across the street, why don't you just have to...
Yeah, so what we're proposing, I'll sweep further down into the lighting plan. So what we're proposing for the lighting on the site is, propose light standards interior to the driveway that consistent with the existing water fishes on Cookman, which comply with the, the street scape requirements that we need on the site. So they need consistency in the development and surrounding movements. And then we're proposing to have low-level lighting along the boardwalk, follow the lighting with the fan lights, and then actually need lights on the garages, over the garages, and in front of the doorways, provide personal lighting to residents as they come into and out of their place of residence. There was discussion of the lighting that we're proposing on Lake Avenue, which is going to be compliant with the RELO, and as you can see, with the black standards with the hook, the downlight. That the, the existing lighting across from Lake Avenue, along the actual lakefront itself, doesn't match what's within this area once the street scape is done on the project's front. So there was discussion about whether that needs to be changed to be consistent with our lighting, and our responses, we don't have control over the right way across Oak Lake Street, so we're doing the street scape on our property frontings, but not on the opposite side.
Sign this witness.
Okay, thank you.
David Fols, who is a vice president of Toll, will go through a little bit of the sign of what these are.
Good evening, there are more council members, appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to the aspects of our application. So this is our first building, this is the building that's located on Cookman Avenue, consistent with the Wesley Lake Village section of the redevelopment plan. It is four stories along the Cookman Avenue boulevard, which is a now just about three-story buildings which are located on Lake Street. We thought it best to bring this up first, it showcases some of our design elements that exhibit our contemporary coastal design, showing some of the massive features you see with the semitish siding, the mixed metals, and glass railing systems. We've got the playful door colors, that was actually a recommendation from the TRC, the liberal or individual identity. So we have that, and then the individual entry features don't make it feel so much as a complex but more individual homes, identifiable as unique.
Now, when we were before the TRC, one of the concerns was on the ends of the units, to add some elements to that, and we did have this plan, Mike.
Sure, yeah, we enhanced the penetration on the ends by turning some of the entryways to face the Heck and Grand side of the community, Grand specifically facing the park. You can see that we've added some windows and some bump days, and included some of the more unique design features of the types of materials we use. It's tough to visualize now, but if you looked at it in contrast to what we originally presented, it's definitely much more interesting and unique. Well, this is the, yeah, this is, flip over to Lake. So this is the lake elevation. There we go. So yeah, this, this show, I think Jay moved to this, this is the perspective from the corner of Heck and Lake, and this shows some of the features of the, I would call it amenities, the seating benches, the bike areas on the corner there, so that it's not just building on road. Gives a little bit of depth and character and somewhere for the residents to congregate. You can also see the boardwalk that Jay spoke about, Mr. Cruz spoke about in his presentation, that is... that is pedestrian-friendly, which is certainly one of the identifiable characteristics of the waterfront redevelopment plan, is that our, the appeal and appearance from the existing roadways is pedestrian-friendly, and we feel we achieve that through the boardwalk. Here you see three stories with rooftop terraces, both the three-story and four-story buildings have the rooftop terraces, which are individual and unique to each unit owner or homeowner. And we feel that this design is transitional from the coast to downtown. Why don't you bring up the color?
The individual?
Or not, the one that you chose, with the call-out materials. Yeah, so this is an exhibit we prepared, the kind of highlights, the, like, I called it playful colors on the doors, but I think that it's in line with the contemporary look of the building, and just enhances the overall appearance. And you can see all the mixed materials that were shown or respected on this building to give a character and, you know, be congruent with the waterfront redevelopment plan. Are there any questions on the elevations?
I'll just go to the three-story first.
Yeah. So you can see from the outside, as Jay talked about, the condominium towers look like traditional townhouses from the street, but housed inside of each one of those towers. You have Unit A and Unit B. And this particular building, Unit A, is in, is in the front of the building or the street, or the side of the street that faces Heck. This is the three-story. And the back of the building, the back of the building is specifically looking at Floor Two. You can see the Unit B is in the back, Unit A is in the front. It's almost a mirror of one another. The buildings on, the buildings on Lake are two-to-three bedroom. The buildings up on Cookman are all three- and four-bedroom. So this, in the buildings that are up on Cookman, they're unique in that there are two-car garages, and they're the tandem garages, which is front to back. So it's not a traditional side-by-side two-car garage. The buildings down on Lake Avenue are one-car garage. And as Jay spoke before, there's areas inside for children to trash and recycle, so that this stuff isn't flowing out into the community.
For identification, the waterfront redevelopment plan requires 1.5 spaces per unit. The three bedrooms are providing two. Two bedrooms are providing, I'm sorry, three bedrooms, three to two bedrooms are providing two parking spaces.
For a total of how many?
A total would be 160 parking spaces.
I mean, 50?
Sixty.
Sixty, thanks.
Thank you.
Just want to touch a little bit of the landscaping, because it's very important to downtown, and it enhances the project, but also the entire area will be developed.
I'm the project landscape architect. I work with E S D. So when designing the site, we came up with three main design objectives for, in regards to the landscape and the streetscape. Our three goals were to create a harmonious streetscape with the surrounding neighborhood in compliance with the design guidelines in the waterfront redevelopment area. And each of these design elements would complement the existing streets, frontages along all four sides of our site. Each street has its own unique characteristics and uses and elements. Secondly, we wanted to create unity between our streetscape, what we're proposing on-site, and the adjacent surroundings, through the use of consistent paving material, site furnishings, streetlights, and, oh, and street trees. And thirdly, we wanted to complement our architectural styles with our site amenities, the human being, the urban and coastal architectural styles.
Now, when we were, before the TRC, they had a number of recommendations with regards to planning this around the site, right, correct?
Right.
And we worked with them to work through this plan to get to where we are, particularly with regard to Grand Avenue, because we're across from Kennedy Park, correct?
Correct, right. We, the architecture has been revised to have more of a presence on Grand Avenue, so we have provided additional landscape and street furnishings to help create more of a nicer pedestrian feel against the parking on Grand Avenue.
Okay. Any questions? And that's our presentation. I've reviewed the letters that came from the TRC and also the Solange note. As you can see from that, number of the recommendations, quite a number of the recommendations that were made by the TRC, we have complied with. There are certain others that we're willing to have further communication with when we're before the planning board, if it goes to the planning board. We've made a lot of effort to work with the city, get this project, but I think it's an absolutely beautiful project, fills that area, creates that transition between what is the waterfront going to the downtown. That's all we have for TRC.
Okay. I know, Yvonne, you were on the TRC, and you made a lot of these recommendations. Are there any ones outstanding that you're deeply concerned about that couldn't be worked out at the next level?
One that stands out in my mind is there's a recommendation that it should be a two-way street, that it become one, one-way. And I think that's significant in that coming in from Heck, it wouldn't, if it was coming in, you would not have headlights facing the other building. And because Grand is such a busy street, rather than having traffic coming and going out of the complex, it would be, it would be better if it's only coming out and leaving. But that's my thoughts on.
We're, we're certainly willing to have that. What we're going to do is get a traffic expert. So we're going to go before the planning board to look at that and see, number one, if it's feasible, how that works with the site, and have that conversation.
Okay. Any other questions?
I've got nothing, but thank you for taking the recommendations of the TRC. I think, I think you guys did a great job with that. Completely appreciate it.
Okay.
Michelle, did you have anything?
No, no. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Very good.
Thanks, Andy.
Not everyone.
We're now on to managers from the City Council.
So I've just got a couple. On April 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. till 11:30 a.m., Deal Lake Commission will have a spring cleanup of Deal Lake. Volunteers can meet at the boat ramp on Seventh Avenue and, and hope to clean up this lake in time for summer. Each of our lakes will do a cleanup. This is the first one scheduled for the spring. I'd just like to also announce that New Jersey Natural Gas is hosting a Energy Assistance Day for those that are having trouble meeting their obligations to the gas company at the, from 9:00 to 5:00, at the Salvation Army Building here in Asbury Park. And they'll help residents determine what programs they might be able to get involved with, to help them with their utility bills. That's it.
I just, well, there are a couple things. One, recreation. Our recreation department is going to be having an Easter Drive walkthrough event on Saturday, April 16th, from 9:00 to 11:00. This is usually an in-person event that takes place on the boardwalk and in Convention Hall, but since Convention Hall is not open at this time, they're coming out and doing something else. So you can drive through, your children can meet the Easter Bunny, and also receive an Easter basket with all kinds of goodies. So please come out. And then the other thing that's really important is the PAL is having basketball tryouts, and that's going to take place, I'm just looking for the date. I'll have to come back to, oh, sorry. This is Saturday, between 8:30 a.m. and 1:00. And the tryout times for 6th and 7th grade is 8:30, for 10th, 11th, and 12th is 10:00. And for girls, all grades, between 11:30 and 1:00. That's it. Thank you.
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, so, again, I'd like to thank Joe and Casey Pilato, the Asbury Park Fishing Club. I'd also like to thank the Manza Brothers, the manager of the Burkey Carter Edge Hotel for providing a venue this year with Convention Hall not being able to be used. April 2nd, you heard Will from Little League, they have a parade starting at 10:45, starting at Veterans Park, then going down to the Little League, they have hot dog hamburgers and refreshments for everybody. You have an event on the 2nd, right? You just said, beach cleanup?
Deal Lake Cleanup.
And then on the 2nd is the Mayor's Wellness Event, also in Sunset Avenue Park. So the 2nd's a busy day, but you can hit all three of them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Matters from the City Manager?
I have nothing, Lisa. Thank you.
Matters from the City Attorney?
Nothing at this time, thanks.
We're now on to the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open up the public comment portion of the meeting?
Move to open.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. The public participation portion of the meeting is now open to the public. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
I can barely hear you, but I think you said public portion?
Yep.
Okay. Rita Morando, 504 Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park. First, I want, I'd like to say something about the signage in our community here. It's from Deal Lake Drive to Sixth Avenue is 15 signs. I mean, like, we're just littered with signs on Main Street, and all, there's duplicates of all the signs. Is there a reason for that? I think, no, the answer. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, I had a problem with my sewer line recently, and I had a video taken of my sewer line into the street. Well, Eighth Avenue happens to be a very good street, I think, and we just had a house sell for $2 million 1.66. And he's got a big, huge crater in the street in front of his house. Our street is really bad. You have to do something about it. And then if you see the video underground, you'll be shocked that way you see. I, I was wondering, where is the sewer truck? Don't we have that anymore? And I'm really concerned about that. I mean, I can repair my part, but the street, the street is very bad. It has to move up on that list, wherever it is. So, I mean, is there an answer to that?
Rita?
The sewer truck?
Are you done with all your questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, no, one more.
Okay.
In the resolutions, there's a 10 by 20. Shed. Huh? Shed. It's a 10 by 20, I can't think of the words.
Shed.
Oh, shed. It's in the bill resolution that you're going to purchase it. But I was just wondering, there's one at the beachfront now, is that the one by the bathrooms? Or is there going to be another one? Okay, that's my three questions.
The 10 by 20 is the new one under menu items?
Yes, that's going to be a First Avenue adjacent to the Beach Office.
So that's going to be an office for beach bathing staff on First Avenue. So that's a new shed, and that's coming out of the menu items that Madison Marquette pays for.
Yeah.
The signs on Main Street, you know, it's a state highway, and we have very little to say what we can take down, and they're not done with their punch list yet. I know Michael, before he left, and James, you know, are working on that, and hopefully we can get some of them down. Some of them are confusing. Eighth Avenue, as far as potholes, again, don't, don't wait till a council meeting, and I, I agree with you, Eighth Avenue needs work. We told you, it is on the list, and it's moving up. We've applied for the federal grant, we've got the state grant, we have the money, but right now we're doing like Bond, then Memorial, then Eighth will be the next one up. So it's not going to be this summer, I'll be perfectly honest with you. So meanwhile, we just have to keep on patching. You told me about the roots that you saw, and I thanked you, and you were going to call Robert Biancini at DPW and let him know so he could get the jet back over there to, like, do that street and clean that street out. Did you call DPW and let them know and show them the tape?
I did call him.
Okay, and did he come look at the tape?
Well, I didn't show him the video that we have.
Well, that'd be...
He said that we're on schedule for a couple of years. I said, but that, that street's not going to last a couple of years.
Nope.
It's horrible.
What he's talking about this...
You spent more blacktop on it than any of the houses.
What he's talking about the schedule, okay, Rita. Okay.
Could you talk a little louder, please?
Yeah, okay, what he's talking about is the pay, redoing the entire street, including the sewer lines, and he's probably right, a couple of years. But what you told me about with your sewer line, with the roots in your line, and then seeing them in the main trunk line, that's where you were going to call him so he could come look at it, and then get the sewer truck that we do have, the jet back, out there to clean up, to make sure, like, the roots aren't hanging anything up where you do have a backup. So if you haven't shared that tape, you having that tape helps us immensely. If you can share that with Robert Biancini, he will have the jet back, back over there as soon as possible and flush out that line.
I haven't seen the sewer truck in a long time.
Well, okay, Rita, your time's up. Your time's up, and they say call Robert and...
Okay.
Give, give him the tape, and that will help him immensely to show that there is a problem, and he'll have the jet back. Then you'll see the jet back, if you call Robert and give him the tape.
Will do.
Thank you, Rita.
Good evening, everybody. Peter Siegel, 1412 Main Street, and I'm here tonight to talk about my favorite topic, housing policy. Thanks for the opportunity. We all know that the cost of housing is increasing everywhere. That's obviously no secret. But I'm here to share with you ideas that I've been talking about for a long, long time here and in other venues, and that is, we can't regulate or rent control our way to housing affordability. The only way to stabilize affordability and pricing for the product of housing is to introduce more supply into the market. It's the same with our wages that we compete for at our jobs, it's the same for groceries, it's the same for gas, lumber, everything, guys. It's supply and demand, you can't regulate affordability. California, New York, the two most expensive states in our country, recently, and very boldly, admitting that all of their extreme restrictions and regulations didn't work. California is now upzoning the entire state to allow for ADUs to be built, and they're purchasing apartment buildings with taxpayer money, with, with public money, to participate in the creation of affordable housing, because they've admitted their rent controls and their restrictions haven't worked. New York, same thing, they're, they've got a program to incentivize people to convert underutilized commercial properties into multifamily buildings. So I applaud California, New York for that. Denver came out with a housing affordability ordinance, they're having 8% to 10% set aside, plus density and height and other, and tax incentives to get people to motivate, to invest, and to build. Amazon, Disney, Tesla, Google, the city of Patterson, New Jersey, all participated... Amazon, Disney, Tesla, Google, the City of Patterson, New Jersey, all participating in the purchase and creation of affordable housing. They're not making private citizens pay for it in means of rent control and other housing restrictions. What does this all have to do with our city of Asbury Park? Well, here, we've got no less than eight affordable housing ordinances that restrict and demotivate entrepreneurs and investors and developers from taking risk, borrowing, and building the new supply that we need. Instead, you guys and others have promoted a rent control ordinance which only restricts the existing supply, pushing the very prices up for the supply of that housing that you're trying to help make affordable. Speaking only for myself, I can tell you that as one of the largest providers of housing in our city, I've got a one-size-fits-all ordinance now that blankets all of my units. The significant majority of people can afford my rents. They pay less than a 35% income to rent ratio. The significant minority are impacted because I'm now, along with others, doing a, instead of repair or replace for my maintenance, I'm just repairing. I've laid off six people, and I'm converting four buildings to condominium, and all those people are gonna be out. I'm gonna send you guys some proposed solutions. I spoke too long, I didn't have enough time to get to my solutions. I'm not just complaining, I wanna actually make suggestions as well. But I'll email them to you. And thank you for the opportunity to speak, but it's gonna be an email consistent with what I've just said.
Please, and greatly appreciated, especially the California and New York reports you have. And as far as, you brought up a good point that we were going pretty fast forward, but we got delayed. ADUs. Where do we stand on that? Because I know that was like something we wanted to get moving quick, and I guess it's got some...
Yes, Steph has been working on it, and we'll be presenting that to council in the next month.
Great. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you for reminding me, because that was on like a front boiler, somehow it got to the back, and now it's back up front. Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? Motion to close.
Public portion is closed. We are now on to the minutes. Approval of minutes for the municipal council executive session of March 9th, and municipal council regular meeting minutes of March 9th. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Now on to consent and agenda resolutions. We have 2022-153, Resolution Approving Special Event Applications. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Individual resolutions are next. Resolution approving payment of bills, Resolution 2022-154. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2022-155, A Resolution Amending Temporary Budget Appropriations for the 2022 Budget.
Move it.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-156, A Resolution Authorizing the Emergency Repairs and Maintenance as Needed at the Water Waste Treatment Plant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-157, Resolution Authorizing the Emergency Variable Frequency Drive, VFD, and Motor Repairs at the Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-158, Resolution Authorizing the Emergency Purchase and Installation of Two Variable Frequency Drives, VFDs, at the Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-171, Resolution Identifying of Menu Items As Per the Subsequent Developer Agreement Between the City of Asbury Park, Madison Asbury Retail LLC, and Asbury Partners.
Move it.
Thank you.
Move it.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-159, Resolution Authorizing the Purchase of a 10 by 20 Shed for the Beach Department.
Isn't that in the menu items?
Yes, so we're putting it on the agenda. We're gonna reimburse the budget for the menu items. That's why we adopted the menu items first.
Okay.
Because we wanna order it now, and we haven't received the payment yet, obviously.
Okay, no problem.
Yep. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-160, A Resolution Authorizing Purchase of Ammunition for the Police Department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-161, A Resolution Approving Change Order Number One for Bond Street Improvement Project.
Move it. Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes, and just so everybody knows, that change orders are zero dollars. Just because it used to scare the heck out of me, but a change order, it's like, oh, there goes the prices. So a lot of the change orders we do, they're zero, because we increase this, we decrease that. So that change order is for zero.
Thank you. Thank you. Resolution 2022-162, A Resolution Amending a Contract with Warshur Electric Supply for the Purchase of Lights Needed at Library Park.
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-163, A Resolution Amending Resolution 2021-369, and Accepting a Grant from the Hazardous Discharge Site Remediation Fund, Public Entity Program, through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, for 101, 103 Lake Court, AKA Springwood Park.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'll move it. Somebody second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
This is a cleanup for Springwood Park.
So this is an old grant that was done when you built Springwood Park, and for whatever reason, it was never, yeah, yeah. So we're just getting reimbursed for it at this point.
We did pay for it, now we got paid.
We're getting reimbursed for it, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-164, Resolution Authorizing a Professional Services Contract to Akari and Iovino for Architectural Services for the Transportation Center renovation.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry. So the renovations, are we gonna be opening the transportation center?
So as I mentioned a while ago, we're going to be renovating the transportation center to relocate our social services department there. We're gonna be adding spaces for social services clients. Also, we'll put a space in for our new social worker, and also for our police department to have a space there to speak with clients. We're also going to add a space for the ticket stations, going to remain in the transportation center. We're just gonna flip-flop it. We'll also be adding a conference room to be used for the community as well.
But will be reopened to the public?
Yeah, it's gonna be a building for the public, as well as we'll have offices there now for our social services department to better assess our clients. Right now, as you know, they're on the second floor here in City Hall, and it's a bit of a challenge at times.
But just so you, but the square footage of the existing waiting area, it's gonna be cut immensely to provide for these needed offices.
I have one more question about that.
Sure.
Will the access from the west side be reopened, the underpass?
The tunnel.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, that's going to be the main thoroughfare of the train station. You'll come in both doors, you'll be able to go in and out. So the right, where the stagecoach is now, will be the train station area, and to the left of it will be the social services department. The train center right now is still not open for, just to purchase tickets. We don't have a waiting room in there, but that has been open.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-165, A Resolution Authorizing a Professional Services Contract to JP Monzo for Financial Analysis Consulting Services.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-166, Authorizing a Professional Services Contract to Ingenuity Infrastructure for Location Plans and Preparation of Bid Specifications for Two Portland Lues.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-167, A Resolution Authorizing Refunds on Subsequent Residential Sewer Payments in accordance with PL 2021.
Move it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions?
See, it's theme here. I'm sorry. So, are these are portable lues?
Oh, wait, you go back on something.
So, this is, okay, the Portland Lue is a permanent bathroom that is stainless steel. It's very common in urban communities, and it allows us to provide some added, very much needed added bathroom space, and they're very easy to clean.
My question is about location, that was.
The locations will probably be in the transportation area, at the end of Cookman. You know, the city doesn't own much land, so we'll probably put both of them at the transportation center to accommodate people coming back and forth from the train, and also off of Cookman Avenue.
The second one was Lake Avenue?
We probably won't be able to locate it on Lake Avenue. We did some site work the other day, we had some mark-outs done, and we don't really have enough space there that we could put it appropriately. So we'll probably, because we also need electric, so we'll probably just locate them both at the transportation center. So Ingenuity was doing, the bid spec for us is going to mark that out. This is just to have them go ahead and do the bid. We haven't permanently decided where they're going to be. This isn't bidding out, the lues is to do the planning for them. So once we have those locations, I'll certainly share that with mayor and council.
Why are they called Portland Lues?
I'm guessing they were made in Portland, Mayor?
It's a Portland start.
There you go.
For 2022-167, The Resolution Authorizing Refunds on Subsequent Residential Sewer Payments in accordance with PL 2021. I have a mover in a second. I have Councilmember Chapman's vote. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Keep me on your toes.
Resolution 2022-168, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and City Council to Execute a Subordination of Mortgage for Melvin and Barbara Daniels for Property Located at 1308 Fourth Avenue, Asbury Park.
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-169, A Resolution of the City of Asbury Park Authorizing the Execution[1584.96]